All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Plan and Zone Commission meeting. Can I have the roll call, please?
Adam.
Here.
Inoway. Gibson.
Here.
Kapler. Armesby. Stoltenberg.
Here.
Wenland.
Here. All right. We don't have minutes from the last meeting. This is a special meeting. Review of Commission Procedures. Good evening, everyone. We are a recommending body appointed by the mayor and the city council to review matters relative to land use zoning and such. I see a number of folks in the audience. So at the appropriate time during this is our only case, I will recognize you at the podium to my right and to your left. And if you could give us your name and interest in the case, we would appreciate that. And online, we have one of our staff or Plan and Zone Commissioners. Can you let us know from time to time that you're there so we know we haven't lost you?
Well, they're all right.
All right. Just periodically, hey, I'm here just because we are at a critical point for a quorum. And if we lose you, we lose our quorum. So we want to make sure we've met the quorum requirement. So, all right, with that, I will begin. Or Taylor will begin.
Thank you, Chairman. We are revisiting case 22-029. This is a site development plan for 1,200 Devil's Glen Road. This item was deferred at the 7/20/22 meeting. To reflect, this is a site development plan. The applicant is Dave Kempen. The proposal here is three apartment, multifamily apartment buildings and two townhouse row buildings encompassing a total of 126 dwelling units. Picture is a rendering of the townhouses right here, a rendering of the one apartment building right here, and a site plan, a colorized site plan. Last meeting, there was a bit discussion about procedure for site development plans. So I'd like to visit that. This is a site development plan. We, this commission hears many every meeting. A site development plan is adopted by council through resolution. The purpose of site development plans is to make sure large developments are in accordance with the comprehensive plan and meet the minimum standards for design, protect existing developments, ensure adequate provisions for public utilities, sewer, water, roads, and promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. The role of the planning commission and review of the site plan is to review the site plan proposal at a public meeting such as this, receive a report from city staff, and then receive comments from the public. There is a time limit for this review. Thirty-five days after the first meeting, a recommendation needs to be submitted to city council. At such time, if there is no recommendation, that site plan will, has, can move to city council. At city council, they shall consider the recommendation of the Planning, Zoning Commission. They can prove, approve with modifications, or deny any proposal by resolution. There's also a time limit for city council to act on such a site plans. But I want to make the, this is not a ordinance, this is not a zoning ordinance, or a land use amendment, or a text amendment. So there's different provisions for voting and adopting such site plans. And any further questions, I can ask City Attorney Chris Curran.
Thank you, Taylor. I think Taylor did a good job of summarizing it, you know, the types of decisions that come before P and Z and council on land use. We've talked about many times. But this is just to clarify quasi judicial decision. So it's the commission and ultimately a council acting as a judge essentially, and applying the facts to the law. When this matter was before the commission and then council on the rezoning matter, that was a legislative matter. There are typically more discretion in the legislative matters. And when this property was rezoned, it's done so by ordinance, which is a city law. So keep that in mind, that the rezoning, the conditional rezoning is among the laws to be considered when applying these facts to the applicable laws. And as Taylor indicated, if a quasi judicial decision is denied, we need reasons, we need specific reasons to go into the record. So if the commission wants to recommend a denial of any quasi judicial decision, we need to be able to specifically describe why that recommendation is being made. And council obviously would would also need to do the same if they were to deny any quasi judicial type of decision. So, any questions from that? I think that's, I think just always good to be reminded of these two different types of decisions that come before the commission and council on these land use issues.
Okay, thank you.
A bit of history and context on this site, since there's been many meetings on this. This site, way back in 1972, a planned unit development was submitted and had preliminary approval for three, three-story townhomes, a total of 24, I believe. It never was fully developed or ever developed. And that, in fact, per our code currently lapses after two years. That planned unit development zoning status existed until this past May, when it was revoked by, recommended for revocation by the commission, and then approved by council. This site does have a history of nonconforming uses. There was a steel construction company on the site. It was zoned as a PUD for residential. The construction company existed and then left. Then it became a kind of gray area where there was outdoor storage and a, lack of a better term, a junkyard. Multiple code violations have been recorded on the site throughout the years, especially in the last 10 to 15 years. Another milestone, in 1999, the Duck Creek Bike Path was easement was acquired through the site. The city came to agreement with the landowner for a bike path easement. This agreement not only allowed the city to have the bike path through the floodplain area on the site, but also specified a number of provisions that the grantor or the owner of the site had. One of these was a density provision, that all the green space for the site shall be calculated for density as a whole, not just the developable area of the site. So these are important factors to consider that are unique to the site, that aren't usually shown on other developments. In 2020, a fire destroyed an office home, and home that was located on the site. And then that kind of kicked in this more nonconforming uses. Now there's only a barn. I believe there might be an off, some type of office upstairs. This year, the developer, the current applicant, held a neighborhood meeting in March. That was the first, it wasn't a meeting held by the city, but it was held by the developer to answer questions to the public and to interested stakeholders. The PUD was revoked in May. In July of 2022, the property was rezoned from the R1 to R4. That's case 22-007. This was a conditional rezoning, as Attorney Chris Curran mentioned. The condition of that rezoning was the site plan, which we are reviewing now, must materially match the approved concept plan. So the current status, zoning is in place for the development. It is R4, conditional zone. A final plot has been approved by, recommended for approval by this body to city council. At the last meeting, there were some areas of clarification on the site plan, specifically the berm, building separation on the townhomes and the apartment buildings, and number of off-street parking spaces. Some code considerations when looking at the specific clarifications include what constitutes a berm. Per our code, this, our berm regulations were implemented, I believe, in 2017. And that berm regards developments along collectors and arterials. And that berm specification is to the satisfaction of the Planning, Zoning Commission, and then recommended, and then to, and then by council. The multifamily building separation is specified and interpreted by our staff and zoning administrator as 30 feet between buildings of the same height, or equal to the height of the taller building when next to shorter buildings, especially when not a multifamily building. Townhouse building separations are specified in the R4 zoning district as a minimum of 15 feet between adjacent townhouse road dwellings. So in this case, there's two townhouse road dwelling buildings, and they need to be separated by 15 feet. As mentioned, the property was rezoned with a concept plan. Before you is the approved concept plan. It showed a total of three buildings, apartment buildings, 12 townhouses, and two separate row house buildings. A turn lane was required from a traffic study. That is included in the concept plan. And then no area within the bike path easement, which also is overlaid with the floodplain, can be developed. So this area is to remain green space, public space. And that's specified in the conditional rezoning, also by the easements, and also by the floodplain. For you is the updated site plan revised from the last meeting. I'll go into a couple of the change, or the four specific changes that were revised. The first clarification and change was a berm located along Devil's Glen Road. Our code specifies a 50-foot setback along arterials or collectors, or the option of a 35-foot setback if a berm is added. There, at this location, the topography, the sidewalk is actually above multiple areas or linear areas of the townhomes, especially here. And this area, it's not as, it's more at a level surface. So the three-foot berm has been added. Also, along the apartment buildings to the south, a three-foot berm has been added. The area along the turn lane does not include a berm due to sightline considerations and safety. The second clarification was parking. Eleven parking spaces have been added. This is three more than required, 225 total. The red areas are, show, the red shaded areas show where parking has been added. The green space has been preserved. So this is a, I think, from staff, staff would contend a good thing for the overall development. The third and fourth items are the building separations. The apartment buildings have two separations located here and here. They are now over 30 feet. I believe it's 31 and 30, it's over 30 feet. The townhomes are now separated by 15 feet. Given the four clarifications and the revisions, staff contends this submitted site plan materially matches the rezoning concept plan as submitted with case number 22-007. After reviewing, we would also contend and recommend that through reviewing the placement of the proposed berm, we still recommend that a berm not be required due to the sightline considerations. But the site plan does show that as of right now. And I can take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Taylor. Appreciate the presentation. Mark, anything to add since publication and presentation?
I think at your, at your daisies, some correspondence we did receive over the past few days from citizens, I would, I would ask that you include those in the record, Mr. Chairman. I'd also point out some of the important factors that I think may have been glossed over at our last meeting, just because we had such a busy docket. One of those being the previously arranged agreement that created the Duck Creek Bike Path easement in perpetuity, which, of course, that stays in perpetuity with this development. The city is required, in making that agreement, to consider the overall density of the project to include the entirety of the ground, including that portion that is in the easement for the bike path. That was a deal we created so we could create Duck Creek Bike Path. Should the city violate that agreement, I would wonder if it would not be the petitioner's action then to remove access to the bike path. So I think that's a consideration that you need to have at the top of your mind.
Yeah, thank you. And in fact, the letters that were added, emailing that, I think I have copies of them up here, and we've got them online as well. So therein for the record, I do have a copy of the easement agreement. And maybe I could just highlight for a minute on that, item two document dated 13th day of October 1999 and recorded in the Scott County Courthouse, Quad Cities Industrial Maintenance and Construction, the prior owner, the owner at the time, shall retain all other rights to the easement granted, including the right to use the ground as part of any green spray, green space required upon the development of the site. So very specific. And that's something we got into a lot of discussion about the density on the small patch. And then the subsequent follow-up that marks referencing item 10, should the city of Bettendorf violate, it's not a defined term, but violate, and I would interpret that in my own nonlegal person, as something that's provided for above is no longer happening, any of the terms and conditions set forth herein, the grantor shall provide the city of Bettendorf a written notice by serving said notice upon the clerk of the city, and the city shall have 30 days to correct said violation. If the violation is not corrected within said 30-day period after serving the notice, then this easement shall terminate, which effectively, if that were the case, would eliminate the bike path through that area. So we're looking at everything very, I know you're shaking your head, but don't, don't take that as the gospel. I've got a lawyer sitting here, and we've talked about it. We don't know what it means, but it means we have to follow the rules. And the rule said, he's granted the developer the right to not be constrained to the area he's developing on, but consider the whole site. So I just want that on the record. It's a recorded document. So that is something that we're taking into consideration tonight as well. Okay. All right. Questions or comments from the commission? Joe, you still there?
Yeah, no questions here, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thanks. I can make reference to the emails and/or letters. One was from Mitchell Johnson, who's a real estate appraiser and lives in Dearbrook, and had raised questions about assessments, valuations, building costs, whether the rent was exactly as we had indicated in the last meeting. I don't see the developer here, but maybe his counsel is. And I'm going to say that's not really within our purview either. That was more anecdotal information. And then it talked about apartments typically having higher occupancy and turnover, and tenants do not become part of the community when they're renters, as they're simply part-time residents and have less pride in the neighborhood. So that's a paraphrase of that email. Then there was another email, and I think Rich is, here's that, Rich back there. So Rich will probably be speaking to us. But we have a detailed email from Rich, which I'll defer to, which, when he speaks. And then there was one other email I had in the list from Linda Riley, 3925 Deer Trail Road. And again, I'm paraphrasing. It was a small email, but she is opposed to more single-family in all of Bettendorf. Single-family homes are better growth for the city. So those were the additional items, and they are going to be made part of the record. So everybody's got a perspective on those. Any other comments, sorry, or questions on the part of the commission? Okay, we'll go to the audience.
If I may. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, staff. My name's Rich Bribble. I live at 1460 Plumtree Road. And also in response, why am I here today and what I was, what I'm concerned about, concerned about local community and my neighbors. I've heard a lot of discussion, and I wanted to contribute and offer what I can from my experience. Concerned about the Duck Creek watershed and the impact that development of this density in the watershed can mean for that, and how this isn't really consistent with the Duck Creek watershed management compared by river action. Sustainability and success of a property development. If this doesn't do well, it's bad for the community. It's bad for our neighborhood. It's bad for the developer. It's bad for everybody. So we want to see it to succeed. It just doesn't seem sustainable with the development density that's proposed on the small portion of the parcel. And then lastly, really would be establishing a clear record for the future. There have been deals in the past. Thank you, Mr. Hunt, for bringing the easement agreement, you know, more to light. I've heard discussions in the past, but not knowing the details of it, I, it helps frame some of the discussion for this evening. And then just also how we approach and then work through the city code and just make sure that, I mean, if we are providing allowances for this development based upon previous agreements, or because it's in the best interest of the city, you know, let's, let's document it and do it the right way, just so that there's a clear record for the future. To start off, if I may continue though?
Yep.
Thank you.
I want to go home before 10 o'clock tonight, so, but yeah, please do.
I will endeavor and try and focus in on some of the key issues. Maybe it would help first, can I ask Taylor? Could you, could you throw up like the first slide that you had on? Well, yeah, with the, so, that one. Okay, so when we look at that and the boundary that's shown on the history and context slide, that boundary is the plat, and that's the 10 acres that we're talking about the development. Taylor, if you could, could you show the next slide that actually shows the, the green space? There we go. So this gets shown on a number of slides and presentations that I've seen in the past. And, and it's continually referred to as the 10-acre development site. But what you'll notice is that there's a significant portion of the actual plat that's missing from that figure. I think what that does is give the receiver of the presentation the impression that the development is actually larger. I mean, if I looked at and I was hearing 10 acres, I would naturally assume that that development's probably on the order of like five, six acres, looking at that figure. But in reality, the development is concentrated on three acres of the overall 10-acre area. That calculates out to more than 40 development units per acre. Now, you can justify that based upon, you know, the 10 acres that it's spread out over. But the reality is, this is what everybody, this is what the neighbors are going to see. This is what passersby's will see on Devil's Glen Road. And Devil's Glen, you know, is set to actually become, you know, more of a thoroughfare. Yeah, and I don't know if that's really the message or the image that really the Bettendorf would want to be presenting, that density of development right there. Now, I understand the concerns and considerations that are in place regarding the easement agreement. And I am not privy to all the details of that, and it warrants, it warrants a deeper look. From the words and the way it was described to me this evening, it sounds like there was a commitment to consider the 10 acres for green space when considering an overall development and a density for the development. None of that really indicates to me that either the commission or the city would be required to consider a maximum density development over the 10 acres. And that's why there are ranges with R4 and the urban medium intensity to provide a variance of densities depending upon limitations of the property for development. And what we have here is a development surrounded by green space, but very little green space within it. I wasn't able to measure what's within the parking lot. I don't think they're meeting the requirement there for internal green space in the parking lot, but I can't speak to that this evening. But what is true is that you've got a very cramped site with limited topography, single point of ingress and egress, which has been an issue on several other developments this year that I've had the fortune of reviewing tapes on. Yet all of that is set aside, and we're still considering a maximum density development here, where it doesn't sound like that easement, easement agreement would not actually require it. What could that mean for us to consider? And I'll get into the spatial requirements in a minute, and why I think that actually says that you just can't physically do this without other modification. But what that offers the city, I think, is an opportunity to say, well, the developer can still develop it and develop it using the 10 acres, but perhaps something closer to 60 development units on that three-acre parcel. Still consistent with that agreement might be more tenable to the community and more sustainable as a development. That would certainly resolve any of the other parking issues and would provide much more space to provide some of the other amenities that were promised in previous proposals, which I think since then have shrunk down to a dog park and a gym and a garage at this point, if I understand it correctly. That's it on the easement, just kind of framing the discussion. Now I would like to speak to the spacing requirements. In going through the code, the code is set up where it defines minimum standards for development. It's a protection. It's not a standard to achieve. It's something to exceed. And where there are discrepancies or contradictions within the code, the code defers and requires that you follow the most protective, restrictive, or conservative of those requirements. And that's where, in my email that I provided to the committee, I delineated various sections within the code where it pointed at the supplemental regulations that would seem to come into play, which would require larger spacing in between the buildings than what has been provided in these revisions. I tried working with the staff prior to the meetings to see if, you know, there could be some kind of revision to the proposal before getting to this meeting. But we weren't able to come to an agreement on that. What, what I've heard in reference, I wasn't able to attend the committee of the whole, but I did hear, I did view the taping of it. And there was some discussion with concerns from the council members on, well, why is it only 15 feet in between the two sets of townhouses? Townhouses within the code in multiple places are treated and defined as multifamily dwellings. The code's pretty explicit when it provides differences and references to single-family homes, homes with two families. And then you get into multifamily units, which would include these townhouses. Specifically, I know I have some of the references in there, but if you look at table 1157B, that's where you get the minimum of 15 feet in differentiation. But then in section 11, 11B14, which is the supplemental regulations, it clearly differentiates between one and two family buildings and multifamily buildings, which includes townhouses by definitions. And that would establish a minimum distance of 30 feet. Likewise, if you look at the supplemental regulations regarding heights of buildings and things like that relative to the distances, it isn't explicit to varying heights of buildings, but that establishes what the distance is. It provides supplemental and additional distance between higher elevation buildings within these development areas, specifically like at the apartment buildings. It would be more like 40 feet in between them when, when considering the supplemental regulations versus the 30, 31 feet currently being proposed by the developer. Why is that significant? And yeah, I took a moment to pause and try and think of why, why would the code be written like this? And what is it trying to achieve? And putting myself in the framers, I am trying to think that what they want to avoid is walling off of an area by developed buildings and still providing those sightlines and, and breezeways so that it appears more natural rather than fortress-like. But that's just my, my own perception on it. And, you know, I provide additional sites and identifications for the other spacing and requirements. More notably, that would affect the development would be looking at the setback off of Devil's Glen Road. And there, we've gone from 50 feet to 35 feet with a berm to 35 feet with a berm in some areas, and then 50 feet to 35 feet with a berm to 35 feet with a berm in some areas and then 50 feet or no. And then, well, maybe we'll just make the berm go away altogether and we'll call it a, a zero elevation berm and that would be good. Um, that, that I can't, can't speak to. Um, it looks like there's a, there's room within the code for interpretation like that. But there's another section in the code that I think would take precedent over that, which if you look at, sorry, now I gotta go to my table. So again, uh, 11, 11B dash 12I point one, uh, discusses the development relative to the way the rest of the development has occurred along Devil's Glen Road. And it specifies that if 50% of the structures on the same side of the street or even the opposite side of the street, if they all have a relatively common setback within, I think it's plus or minus five feet of each other, that no development should be any closer than that to the, to the street based upon what has been established as a, a regular setback. Uh, I, I didn't measure on Google Earth exactly, but eyeballing it, I still think you're looking at about 50 feet up and down Devil's Glen Road. Um, that, that seems to be reasonable and consistent with the rest of the development. And if the committee agrees with this, this analysis and, and how that would be, that would push back the townhouses by about 50 feet. Well, not 50 feet, another 15 feet into the parking area. And there's no way to fit in the apartment buildings as currently designed in the area that it is. I, I have a lot of, I have, certainly have more comments. Uh, however, a lot of those would be rendered moot if we agreed on these points and then looked at what could be more reasonably provided by the developer to give us a better solution and something that would be sustainable and inconsistent with the requirements of R4 and urban medium intensity, which 40 develop, 40 dwelling units on three acres, I'm sorry, 126 dwelling units on three acres, uh, just really doesn't seem consistent with that proposal. And with that, uh, I'm finished. I'm open for questions or I can relinquish the floor.
No questions from me. Anyone? Counsel? I guess one of the things that is not really a question, but it's a, it's a clarification I want to get, I want to ask, um, counsel here. What I'm hearing is there's an alternative interpretation from the public about our code as a, as a body. We look to staff. We've got a professional engineer and they all wrote the code. And my assumption is that that's our source of, um, authority relative to interpretation of the code. How?
Yeah, I, I, that is correct. I, and if we want to look at the code, 11151 talks about the duties and powers of the zoning administrator. And one of those is to interpret the code. And so, uh, Mark and Taylor and their professional staff have done that. And so that is their job and Mr. Privile can, can disagree, but, um, but that is, that is their recommendation and their interpretation as code gives Mark the power to do.
Okay. All right. Okay. Who's next in the audience?
Go ahead.
I'm gonna go.
You go.
No, go ahead.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name's Steve Tomatic. I live at 1222 Devil's Glen Road. I have a couple of questions. Uh, my house from the very front porch, front edge of the front porch to the outside, inside edge of the curb is 55 feet. If you look at a map and the overhead, uh, view of all the houses that are along Devil's Glen Road, north of me, there's like five or six, I don't know. And then there's a A-frame that sits way in the back, but then, then there's another, I don't know, five or six houses. They all have got at least 55, 50 feet, at least 50 feet, but they are in a row. Now you take this who is moving into our neighborhood, you take this and you put him at 35 feet to the front edge of his porch or whatever you want to call it. I'm going to step out my front door and all I'm going to look at is the end of this building. I mean, it is not, my line of sight is way off by this, by this building, I, these buildings, these townhouses. So 55 feet, 50 feet is not, I don't think is hard to explain. They could move everything they want west 15, 20 feet, whatever they want to move it to. As long, I guess, as long as you stay out of the flood plain. Oh, wait a minute. That's a buildable space now because all I have to do is lift up the building and put it above the flawed, any height, whatever height the flood is. So anyway, the 50 feet is the setback to my house and to every other house. And why should these people be allowed to move into our neighborhood at anything less than 50 feet? Um, now, if you look at that map right there, where, where is the garbage collection point for those townhouses? I can, I found the two, there's two dumpster spots for the apartments, but there's no spot registered as their garbage collection area or their dumpster location. Um, I really don't want cockroaches. I don't want mice. Uh, if they're going to put this thing on, on my north, on the northern border, I'm inviting these, these critters to my house. And I'm not real fond of that idea. Um, uh, there was a third one, but I don't remember it at the moment. But those, the setback in the dumpster area and he's going to have a dog park. Of course, it's going to smell. All dog parks smell eventually. I don't care. Any place you put urine or you put feces is going to stink eventually. My house is within the 20 feet that you're setting back from the end. So, um, I, I'm not real happy with that idea of having a dog park under my back windows. Um, so anyway, that's my problem is setback, collection and smell.
Okay. Hey, Steve, one of the things that I'll confirm with staff, just it, the 35 feet is a 35 foot setback, but I believe, and I'm looking at Brent, that the 35 is from the, what would be the west side of the sidewalk. Cause the sidewalk, the west side of that sidewalk is the property line. So it'll be 35 feet back from that, just like.
If you move it back from the, from the sidewalk, that'll be 50 feet. That'd be at least 50 feet from the street. Because the sidewalk right now, plus the boulevard is probably 10 to 15.
It'll be 35 feet. The setback will be from the west side of the sidewalk. Am I, and I'm looking at Brent. Is that correct?
You are correct. Setbacks are measured from the property line.
Which is the?
Okay. So my, what I measured this afternoon, 50 feet is what I measured from the front of my house to the street. Now, I didn't know where you.
And that difference, like you're saying, may end up being pretty close to the same when you add the width of the sidewalk and the setback. Yeah.
Where it's at without that turn lane. I don't know where the sidewalk's going to go from that turn lane. But if you move everything back 35 feet from the west edge of the sidewalk, I'll take that one.
It will be. And then Chris Townsend's here. He can tell us where the garbage is going for, for that question. So.
And then just leaves one item and that would be the smell from the dog park.
Yeah. I, and I, I don't know. How far are we away from the, where the dog park's going to be from the property line?
Right there. See it there? It's in the center north side. Where you got a fence around it right now.
Green space dog park. I see it there. Yeah.
All right. And my house sits, eh, not too far up there.
I, I think we're pretty, maybe far enough away that you're not going to get a whiff of, and I don't know what their plan is. I mean, they can't have the dog park without picking up the stuff pretty regularly or nobody will use the dog park. But I, I have no idea. We're looking and I do not see noted on here and Chris didn't, you didn't know where the dumpster's going? I thought dumpster. There it is. Dumpster location.
There's a square in between the two, the buildings. That's a dumpster location for those, for the, for those, right, right there. And there's another one down between the first and the second one in the same area, right down there. Yep. That's the other one. Now, you go back up here at the, at the townhouses, there is no dumpster location or designated area. And I'd like to know where that is.
I'm totally guess.
Do they move, have to move it out of the street? Does the garbage man pick it up?
No, cause you won't have a curb cut to pick it up off of, of Devil's Glen. I would assume, I would assume that goes to, and careful when you assume, um, that it goes to those other two collection points.
These people are going to have to walk from there down to the.
I wouldn't be happy in the snow and rain either, but.
That's their problem, not mine.
They got, they're, they're going to rent it. So, yeah, I, it would be practical if they had another location, but those are the two that they're showing. So that's as smart as I can get about that.
That's all you can say about that?
Yep. All right. Who's next? Somebody else was back there. I know.
Hello, Rick Murphy. I live at 3892 Deer Trail Road. And I want to address several concerns, particularly with regards to traffic. And in my review of the traffic study, concern is it doesn't seem to have accounted for the decline in traffic due to COVID. Uh, and where I'm coming from on that is I, uh, reviewed the traffic study after listening to the hearing. I was surprised to hear the traffic has declined in this area over the last few years. I did pull, I did pull out the 2018 and 2014 traffic studies. And I assume that's what you were referring to. And just a moment here.
Every four years, right? Brent? Yep. Every four years they run that.
Yeah. Uh, and I was surprised to see, uh, in 2014, there was 12,100 vehicles coming down Devil's Glen. There were 8,500 in 2018. Uh, however, at the intersection at the bottom of the hill, the traffic did actually increase from all directions, uh, coming down Devil's Glen went to 8,500 from 8,300. I then reviewed the traffic study and I was wondering how they, if, what allowances they had for COVID with their traffic study. And I didn't find any reference to that. So then I tried to get a sense of how many vehicles per day they were using. It was challenging because I couldn't find an apples to apples comparison. Uh, it did not have, I saw a list of the daily traffic rate, but when I went to page 22 and summed up the numbers for the eight hour period, it was about 5,500 vehicles. When I went to page 35 for the, I'm sorry, 12 hour period, I went to page 35 for the same 12 hour period, it was about 6,800 vehicles. Uh, but at any rate, it seemed significantly below past traffic patterns, which is not surprising to me because the study was done in the midst of COVID, uh, when people were traveling a great deal less. Uh, I would be an example of that. I've worked on the arsenal for 24 years, uh, drove that route for many years, but starting in March of 2020, I didn't go to work for a while, uh, for about a year. I did start right before this period to go to work a couple of times a day, but still not on a consistent basis. And when I went on the arsenal at that point, it was a ghost town. Around my building, there's about 350 parking spots and you'd see 10 to 15 cars, just not many people going to work. But that's going to be changing. In my organization for particular, the requirement will be that you come into the office twice a week, including one time where everybody in the office comes in. And I think as we move forward, more and more businesses are going to be having people come to the office will increase the traffic. But I didn't send any allowance for that in the traffic study, which causes me concern. In fact, from what I could tell, it used 2022 as the baseline and then extrapolated off from there. So I'm concerned it's not causing, catching all the traffic. And that's particular concern because of the density of the site. And we talk about density. There's, there's concern about green space and whether we're following the easement variance and whatnot. But I think that's a non sequitur is a, a non-issue here because we're not talking about green space. We're talking about density in terms of 20, 225 cars or something coming in and out of the same spot every day. And that's just a lot of traffic in that particular. And I'm not sure the study really captured that, which is one of our big concerns. I also wanted to touch a little bit on the setback. Um, I think it's very important to hit here. I left the last meeting thinking that had to be either 50 feet or a berm, but now I'm seeing on this particular map, I'm sorry, 35 feet. It's a 35 feet and with a berm in some locations, but where the turning lane is where the most traffic is going to be at, there apparently will, it's proposed there not be a berm. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Uh, which is disconcerting because we'd look at the inside of the, the space there. Yes, there's a dog park. I haven't really seen anywhere where there's a play area of any kind. You want to attract families to this area, but I, I'm, maybe it's there, but I haven't seen a playground or any place for children to play. Uh, worrisome just because you're so close to the road. Comment was made at the last meeting that the properties up at Devil's Glen and 53rd, only 25 feet away from the street. I'm glad that's no longer the rule here. And I'm thankful for the, the, the city and for passing a regulation that's 50 feet. Um, I've never seen people playing out in front of that particular complex and I'm thankful for that. I would be very nervous seeing kids that close to the road playing. Fortunately, up there, you have a nice bike path that'll take you in a straight sightline to a park to play in. I'm not seeing that with this subdivision, which concerns me. Is that going to push kids to be playing in front of the, the townhomes, which is about the only play green space I see for children, except for going down to the creek. And that, yet in that area, you have where the most cars are becoming in the turn lane, the proposal is not to have a berm at all. So that's very worrisome. I think from a safety standpoint, that just doesn't seem to make sense. And another indication that you're just putting too much into this site. And if the density were less, you could move the buildings back to where they ought to be for a, a more safer situation. Um, now there's some discussion about there's a difference of opinion as to what, how to interpret the regulations and the ordinances. I would ask if the city has looked at the concerns raised by my neighbor and they view it differently. He cited very specific ordinances, very specific, specific regulations. I would ask that if specific response then be drafted and shared with the city council and also the public as to why that particular interpretation is inappropriate. Because very clearly, as I was listening to that, the, under that interpretation, this development can't happen. And if you're saying that's completely wrong, I think this, the citizens deserve the chance to hear exactly why that is. I'd also want to address one last point, and there's been some discussion of this property. Um, and it was here again, talking about how it was a junkyard and that, uh, I think the last meeting was asked, isn't this an improvement from it? I would disagree with, first off, the statement, it is a junkyard. Because I looked up the definition of a junkyard is where, uh, items that are no longer desired to be used are deposited and left there, occasionally sold. But that really wasn't the case with this. It was a staging area for the company to work there. They had lots of vehicles there. You saw that, but you never really saw anybody walking through the property, never saw anybody, a vehicle really driving on there. At the end, it got kind of strange. I mean, there's lots of odds and ends there, lots of bicycles. I thought perhaps the idea was that they're going to have weekly yard sales there or something like that. Uh, but it's definitely not a junkyard, but to the extent you feel it was non-conforming and it fell into that condition, I would say shame on the city for allowing that to happen. And my expectation is the city would prevent things from happening. And I don't think the city's failure to prevent this from becoming what you saw as a junkyard should be a justification for coming up with a development that is too dense for this particular area. Uh, so I guess to answer the question, is this project an improvement? Which is a question I believe the chairman and other people asked of several witnesses. At the last hearing, I would say absolutely not. Uh, as I said, I rarely saw a person walking on that site or a car turning in there. There will probably never be a time if this project goes forward where I won't see someone on the site, a vehicle turning in there. Uh, so, uh, there was also discussion that there's already a lot of concrete on the particular area. I would disagree with that. There's really maybe an eighth of the site, there's concrete. What there mostly is, is a lot of grass that catches rainwater to print runoff. So I would say, uh, moving forward, this dense of a development is not better than the past use. And you don't have to take my word for it. Look at, we've now had three public hearings before this body, two before the city council. No one has stepped forward and said they support this. Universal opposition. And that's even somewhat of a limited sample. Uh, I suggested at one hearing that signs be posted, uh, advising people on the bike path that they're aware of this to make more people aware of this. That didn't happen. Submit, considering that every person has come forward and opposed this project, had you done that, you would have even more people stepping forward saying, this is too dense of a development for this site and should not go forward as it's currently drafted.
Thank you, Rich. Yes, sir. Hey, and while you're walking up there, I'm going to ask Brent, because I know he's got a 630 hard stop for himself, but, um, the traffic on Devil's Glen, the current ADT, average daily traffic on it relative to its perceived or calculated capacity, where are we relative to current or even highest ever use relative to our expected capacity for that road as it sits?
We're at less than half the capacity of a four lane roadway. So just for comparison, four lanes as we have on Devil's Glen. So just for comparison, four lanes as we have on Devil's Glen. If we use 12,000, which I think was the number from 2018, or 2014, excuse me, the highest one that we had on record there, the capacity of a four lane by planning capacity is north of 30,000 vehicles a day. We have 25,000 vehicles a day on Devil's Glen, north of Hy-Vee. Now, you do have a turn lane there, so your capacity is even higher. We have 20,000 on Middle Road immediately west of Devil's Glen. It's a four lane road there with no turn lanes. So we're not even close to the capacity. It's an arterial roadway. It's meant to carry the heaviest volumes of traffic.
So the impact of 225 or even 500 cars a day would be insignificant as far as the impact on capacity of.
Capacity of the four lane, correct.
All right, yep. Go ahead, sir. Sorry.
Okay, my name's Peter Glock. I live at 3508 Woodbury Place in Bettendorf, obviously, that's in Deerbrook. And I'm going to talk about a global picture first because many cities in this day and age are establishing climate plans. And climate plans have to do with renewable energy, with net zero carbon emissions by certain, certain timeframe, et cetera. But it also, they also deal with natural habitat preservation, such as watershed, that type of thing. So I would implore, you know, we're talking about a specific project here, but I would implore the planning commission, which should be a component of this, to establish with the city council, a climate plan which will dedicate and preserve certain areas of the city. I am very concerned regarding the bike path. I ride the bike path on my bike many times. I walk the bike path with my wife. In this day and age, we need tranquility, we need meditation, we need to find it to be peaceful. A development like this certainly seems to me infringes upon that. And it also infringes upon, infringes upon other things, like the potential for more pollution, et cetera. So I cannot see how this is beneficial. The other factor that no one talks about, and which should be talked about when we talk about potential developments, are there, is there any coordination with the school districts? How many students is this going to, how many more students will this development have? Can the schools handle that type of thing? Is there any type of coordination between these entities? I don't see that.
Well, we had raised that, that issue actually came up in the last meeting. And Mark, you can address that, the involvement or not of the school district relative to development.
Sure. We, we had some, I would say unofficial communication with the school district on this project. This is a Bettendorf Community School District. They certainly seem to have the capacity. They had no concerns about it. They are able to attend these meetings and voice any concerns should they want to. They have, as of yet, elected not to do that. But really, we're separate and apart from them. They are their own entity. We are our own entity. And, you know, the development in the city, while it does impact them, the reviewing body for that development is the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council.
Yeah.
When we talk about 126 dwelling units, I'm assuming these are two bedroom units?
It's a mixture. I don't, I don't know the exact count, but it's a mixture.
Okay. All right. When, when you build a complex like this, is, does, and I don't know the answer to this, thus I'm asking. Does a certain percentage of those units have to be subsidized housing?
I don't, I don't know.
We have, we have no requirement for subsidized housing in the city, in the city of Bettendorf. These are market rate apartments that will be built. I would guess you probably have $10 million of vertical expense, plus the engineering and site work. You're probably a $12 million project. To my knowledge, the financing does not include any low income tax credits. These are market rate apartments, market rate townhomes.
Did you hear that? Okay, there's, there's.
To his knowledge, but that's not an assurance, correct?
I, I have no way of assuring you there's no section eight, but.
Okay.
I don't think that's the case, but.
Okay, well, once again, I implore that the city of Bettendorf begin some type of a climate plan which protects natural resources amongst other things. And I think this commission should be a component and have input to that climate plan.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your input. Anyone else in the audience with regard to this matter? Okay, got one more?
My name's Chris Zerbonia, and I live at 3630 Deer Ridge Court. And I just wanted to say that I am opposed to the density of this. And I'm wondering what will the impact be on the flooding of Duck Creek with such large parking lots and so many roof lines and all that? Is there going to be a retention pond on the site, like most developments have that size? Or is it all just going to run into Duck Creek and cause extra flooding along there? And then my other question is, what is the benefit to the, to the city of Bettendorf citizens? I mean, what, what is the benefit of this? I mean, is it going to lower our taxes? Is it? I, I don't understand what the benefit is for, for the whole neighborhood. Is there a benefit?
Well, I, I'm, I'm pulling off the top of my head, but somebody would probably like a place to live.
There's plenty of places to live, but.
There's two and a half million units shortage in America right now.
But you're putting them in a residential neighborhood.
Well, that's their residents.
You're overpopulating a residential neighborhood.
Right. I'm not going to argue with it. I'm just telling you, there's a shortage and every apartment building that's been built has been filled. So it's not like they're going unfilled. That would be a kill, to me, a clear indicator that the market is saying there's no demand. But in fact, the market is saying there's not enough supply for the demand that's out there. That's the way I read the market. That's just Roy's opinion, but you can differ with that.
Okay, what about the flooding? I mean, has there been a study done on that about the runoff or retention pond or?
We discussed this at the last two meetings. The total Duck Creek watershed is 41,000 acres. This is five acres of concrete going into it. So it's an insignificant amount. And along Duck Creek, really along any major creeks, you try to get that water out of the site as quickly as possible, especially on the downstream end. Because what detention does, it provides protection for downstream properties. We're at the downstream end. We want to get that water out of the creek, get it to the river, so we don't cause a backup further upstream. So that's why there is no detention requirement along this section.
Yeah, thank you.
Just to clarify, somebody brought this up to me, not in one of these meetings, but it's my understanding this will be piped under the bike path right into the creek, just so everyone knows that. So it's not going to be running across.
Across the bike path, that's correct, as Taylor's brought up. Underneath, yes, there will not be runoff across the top of the bike path. The pipes are located underneath it, that's correct.
Okay, last call for the audience.
Just one more question, if you will?
Yep, just go up there so I can catch you, okay? Chris? Peter, sorry. Peter Glock.
Correct. So, so during, during this construction, if it, if it does occur, one's going to assume that the bike path will have to be closed for a period of time. Is that correct?
I don't know.
No, I don't believe so. No.
They're not going to have to tear up the bike path to put the, put the runoff piping, et cetera, underneath the bike path?
Just those two, that can be done in a matter of hours, to put a piece of pipe across and repave it.
Okay, to be seen. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I had one other back, well, maybe two. We'll go. I'll go with somebody who hasn't spoke yet, and we'll come over to you, and then to Steve.
Hi, I'm Peter G. Karas. I live on Devil's Glen Road. I use the bike path. And the, the whole concept of this just seems to me like the last person said, what is the benefit of having that apartment building right there, next to a 20,000 year old creek that has a view of 200 million year old rock faces? And people get to walk and bike and everything in that area. And I just think that it's, it's an eyesore. It's unnecessary. It's extremely dense. And the, the greatest fear I have is another 200 cars pulling out into Devil's Glen Road. And when you say it's a four lane road and it has a capacity of this or whatever, I'm talking about the site specific, right there on the creek, the bottom of the hill. I'm there every day and people come from State Street down that hill to the creek at 40 miles an hour. And they go up from the creek, up towards Middle Road at 40 miles an hour. And it's just too, it's too dangerous to have another 200 some cars trying to get out onto the roadway right there at that spot. It just doesn't seem like there's some sort of advantage for, to, to anybody to having that right there. Well, people need a place to live. Well, a few feet off of State Street going up Devil's Glen Road, there's a big apartment building on the right hand side. It's been boarded up for a couple of years now. I'm, I'm sure that there's some other place that they could develop, except right there in the flood plain, next to the bike trail. It's, it just seems like too many cars in that spot. And then the other angle of this, having used this all this time, when you talk about it, it was a junkyard or it wasn't a junkyard, whatever it was, when I drove by, I'd see these giant machines all leaking oil or gas or oil or, or something. And I wondered, has the commission, has the EPA ever tested the property there to see how contaminated the soil is before it's developed for anything? You know, a parking lot for the bike path or just tall grass? Is, is there ever been an EPA study on the soil quality on that site?
Not, not that I'm aware of, but the city would not be doing that, but the developer would. And then they start digging holes and they find stuff, but I, I have no idea. Yep.
Consideration at home.
Yep. Okay, I think we've got you next, sir.
Good evening. Don Adams. I'm the operations manager for Mr. Kempin. Obviously, I've been here listening to some of the questions and a few of the questions I have answers for and others I can get back to if need be. As far as the dumpster area, there, there are two dumpster areas for the, the whole property. If down the road, we see that that's an issue, we did add the extra parking spaces and we have room to take two of those away and add a third dumpster site if need be. And we will watch that and, and address it if needed. There was concern about kids playing and being near Devil's Glen. The bike path is obviously a huge part of this. The bike path is right there and the, the park is right across the street. If, if we end up with a lot of families in this property and, and it's something that's needed, we'll certainly address it. Back to the junkyard. We've worked very hard over the last couple of weeks just to get the place so that it's cleaned up and presentable. Anybody that's been by there in the last couple of days can see a huge improvement. 90% of the stuff that was on that property went to the junkyard. And there was a lot of stuff there.
Well, when I went down there today to look at it, matter of fact, the last vehicle was being hauled out on a flatbed, which was non-operating. Like you say, 99% of the other vehicles were just laying there. I'm not going to dispute the definition or not of a junkyard or what constitutes junkyard according to Webster or Wikipedia or whatever. But when I looked at it, it looked like a junkyard to me.
Absolutely. And we, as, as we went through and, and cleaned the area up, we've taken dump trailers full of stuff to the landfill that was in behind all of that overgrowth. Again, we've now got it mowed down to where it's, it's presentable and, and our goal is to keep it that way. The, the park right, or the trailer park right across the street, there's one dumpster for that whole park. There's 31 units in that park. They use one dumpster. If, if you drive through at any given point, the park is clean. So I, I, I don't know what a dumpsters is, is a huge issue, but again, we'll address it if it, if it becomes.
Don, how about the, the poop and pee in the dog park for Steve?
Yeah, absolutely. Again, we're, our goal is to be good neighbors here. We're not, we're not expecting to commit and, and end up with a huge mess for the, for the neighbors. And as, as issues arise, which they will, when, when you have large areas like this, issues will arise. And we'll address them. The dog park is, is obviously an issue that if it becomes not taken care of, as we see people do all the time, walking down the street, some people just are not going to take care of their animals. It, it don't matter if you provide all the, the bags and the cleanup material for them, they're just going to ignore it and do their thing. If it becomes an issue, then obviously it'll have to be closed down. We're, we're not going to allow it to become what it is as of the moment, in the way that the place looks.
How about, do you have any insight into the section eight question that was raised?
Absolutely. Now, this will not be subsidized housing.
Any feel for your target rent level?
There, again, there's multiple different ones. There will have studios, one, two, and three bedroom units. And then, of course, the townhouses.
Just a range, just for ballpark?
Nine to 11, 900 to 1100 a month.
And will you have an onsite office there?
In phase two, we will. The, the third building, there will be an office that will be housed, or will be staffed.
So if we had a neighborhood or neighborly issue, like the poop happens kind of thing or whatever, walk in the door and there's somebody on site that could address neighbor kind of issues?
If, if there's no one there, there'll be a, a phone number to get ahold of someone, and more than likely, that'll be my phone.
Okay.
If you go to the other end of Devil's Glen, at 53rd and Devil's Glen, just south of 53rd and Devil's Glen, on the east side, there's the, the two rows of townhouses and the 22 unit building. We, we put that building, that project together a few years ago. And if you drive by there today, it still looks as it did when we, when we finished. It's, it's very clean. It's very, it, to me, it has a lot of curb appeal. We worked very closely with, with city staff at that time, and our, our intent is to do the same here. Any other questions I can answer or help with?
I'm sorry, sir. You, you mentioned the rent, I, I didn't catch it.
I, again, I don't know an exact number, but it's going to be somewhere in the 900 to 1100, depending on each unit.
And a studio versus a three bedroom be, I'm assuming dramatically different, but I have no idea.
Absolutely, yeah. Size wise, obviously, and, and amenity.
You referenced your development at 53rd and Devil's Glen on the south side of 53rd Street. Is that a comparable rent?
I, I don't, we've since sold that particular property. But I, so I can't speak on where they're at right now, but it, yes, it was at that time, it was at that rate. We, we were in that very close range.
And prior to that facility being sold, were you running that? Were you managing that onsite? Did you have onsite?
So that particular property, we did not have an office, but our manager lived onsite and was available onsite.
Okay.
I'm sorry. No, all the way up to 53rd. If, if you come up to the stoplight at 53rd and you look over your right shoulder, it's the, the development right there on the.
Just past the north entrance to the Crook Creek Park there, to the dog park, right? And where the bike path comes out, yeah.
Correct.
What's the construction timeline?
We're going to be at the mercy of, just like everybody else. Our, our goal is with phase one, hopefully to be up and going within a year and a half is our, is our hope. Again, supplying, you know, materials and stuff is going to be, that's, that's our concern right now, that all of our, our, our contractors coming back with.
So a couple of years of building right there at that intersection?
Our hope is not near that long. No.
All right, Don, appreciate you filling in some.
Absolutely.
Some gaps there. Thank you. Okay, last call to the audience. All right, man in red, he has, sir.
My name is Ron Klein. I live at 3684 Deer Trail Road, which is in Deerbrook. Just a couple of questions about the density, and I'm sure that you all contemplated this and the answers are yes. With this density, how does that impact the city's systems? First question, does the city? First question, does the city own the necessary fire equipment and stuff to uh, to fight a potential fire in this kind of area?
We got the chief here. He'll tell us about that.
Yes, we do. Um, these particular units are all gonna be sprinkled as well, which uh, helps when it comes to any type of life safety system.
And then ambulance support?
Yep, correct.
In terms of location of our fire stations and ambulances, is the response time adequate to this location or?
Just, just as it would be next to Mr. Tomatic's house. Absolutely.
Okay. And uh, I appreciate the comment made by the other gentleman about the schools. Um, and I appreciate the fact that we've said that the, that uh, the school has elected not to bring up any issues about this. Problem is, we build this and then there is an issue. Have we, do we know that there are no issues with our school system being able to support this many? I, I understand that the school says, won't, hasn't said anything, but now's the time to ask the question, not.
We're not aware of anything specifically, um, Ron, but I know the school system regularly evaluates and keeps tabs on the developments to make sure, just like they put in the Hopewell School and they've expanded it, is it three times now? Oh, that's, that's PV, sorry, Bettendorf, but yeah. Every, they all, they both look at it regularly to see what's going on for their capacity. Sometimes they shift where the routes and who goes to what school to make it balanced, but they're constantly looking at that. Um, just in, in perspective, Bettendorf grew ten thousand, was it, between the previous sentence?
I think about seven thousand people.
Seven thousand, which was about twenty-five percent, something like that. It was significant growth. So they're, they're on it. We, we've got growing pains just like everybody else, but in general, I think um, services and everything else, I know my garbage gets picked up, my street gets plowed and um, I haven't fortunately called the fire department lately, so yeah, but. Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, last call. We're closing the audience back to the commission. Joe, you still with us?
Yeah, I am. I am Roy.
Okay, good.
Um, I've got a, a, just a couple of comments. Um, I guess, um, I really appreciate it. All that's been said uh, on both sides of this this evening and as well as during the other commission meetings, we've discussed this site. There's been a lot of thoughtful um, detailed correspondence that was submitted. Uh, I, I agree, the details worked out between the builder and the city uh, have been positive, but as I said the last meeting, I think that would have been resolved anyway. I think decisions like this are never very easy, especially for a volunteer board. Um, we do try to balance as best we can, the city's interests, the community's interest, the rights of the owner of the property and, and, and the other property owners who want it developed maybe in a different way or not at all. And, and I'm sympathetic to owners who live next to around a piece of property that's been vacant for a long time. Uh, that's happened to me in the past as well. But um, that being said, I also very strongly support the right of a property owner to develop their, their, their lot, their land, and those rights have to be respected under the law. And, and we need to remember this is a proposal from the developer. This isn't something that the city proposed. We can't decide where people put an apartment building necessarily anymore than we can decide, you know, whether this is a good place for a, a, a car wash or a grocery store. Appearance wise, I think it's gonna be a nice improvement for the area, especially compared to the trailer court in, across the street and, and the way this property used to appear. Um, I, I, it's uh, it's uh, I, I think it'll be, look good. It'll also provide housing that's needed, as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, at uh, at a very convenient location next to two um, busiest thoroughways in the city. Um, and as I think we've heard from staff, it, it meets the city's requirements for, for, for density. They talked about building spaces, the traffic, uh, parking. It's also environmentally compliant and, and as our council mentioned, um, this proceeding is more akin to a, a judicial proceeding than legislative. And, and that of course limits the discussion that we have as well. So I, I support the proposal. That's all my comments.
All right, thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Others in the commission?
Sorry, just a couple of things. First, the questions I had at the last meeting have all been addressed and I appreciate that. Um, as far as the, the question of density, correct me if I'm wrong, the que, that question has been answered already with the council's approval of an R four zoning. So the question of density has already been asked and answered and is outside of the site development plan discussion at the moment.
I would say that's true.
Um, subsidized housing, question mark. Well, that's well outside of our commission's.
Yes.
Authority responsibility. I find it unlikely that the city wouldn't be aware of that because certainly that requirement for a certain number of houses or spaces to be, you know, at a less, lesser rate, that would be tied to the funding of the project. And that would also be something that the city would have to approve from the administrative office. And so I think it unlikely that, while it's not in our responsibility, it'd be unlikely that we wouldn't have heard about it.
Yeah.
So that question I think has been asked and answered.
Yep.
That's been asked and answered. Um, a reasonable question for sure, but I think it's been asked and answered and, and given um, the work that's been done in the last two weeks to clean up some of these details, I, I don't have any objection.
Yeah.
I'll just make a, a comment on the traffic. Um, when I first opened my office, from my house to my office was a two minute drive on fifty-third street. Since then, there's been tons of building that's taken place on fifty-third in that span. And that drive now takes me five minutes if I hit the one light. Two lights now. There was one, now there's two. I'm fairly certain that when Davenport, whoever the developer is, gets done with their major really dense project on fifty-third street, that my drive is gonna include four traffic lights and probably take me fifteen minutes or so. Huge inconvenience to me, and I'm saying that just because I'm used to two minutes. So I don't like it. So I understand the difference there. I also understand that we're talking about a four lane road on a hill, which is why I pushed for the, at the very first meeting for the turn lane, because I thought it was very important that there was a turn lane there. So I, I do sympathize with those that are gonna be disrupted by the traffic there. And I would not be surprised at some point in the future if there's gonna be a traffic light needed right there at the entrance to this building. And it will be an inconvenience for folks. But it should not stop us from putting this project in here. And as I said at the last meeting, I've seen projects like this come before us constantly. They seem too big. They seem like they're gonna be an eyesore and once they're done, they are definitely an improvement. Um, both from a visual aspect and from sustainability aspect. Um, it seems like in the last few years, we've had fewer and fewer complaints from residents coming in talking about water issues than what we had when I was first on this commission many years ago. Which tells me that the developers, the engineers have figured out how to properly um, hold the water when it needs to be held or properly drain it away when it needs to go. Um, so I just wanted to make those comments mainly for the city council when they're reviewing this, uh, but I think this is going to be a good project overall.
All right, I'll throw in a little editorial too before we um, call for a motion in a second. So um, I do appreciate all the comments from the audience, from the neighborhood, the surrounding areas. I think we've gotten a good overview and I do, I do sympathize with some of the points of pain that, um, and I may be pains too strong a word. Inconvenience, um, not the way it used to be, some of those things, some of it could be pain with traffic or somebody who slams on the brakes to go in and somebody gets rear ended, it's bound to happen. Uh, don't disagree with that. Balance against historically what it's been. Um, and again, that, my view has been, and I've lived here twenty um, five years, that that place has always been a dump. Um, so I frankly view this as, as an improvement. Not as pretty as green trees perhaps, but it hasn't been green trees all its life. And I do ride the bike path and walk along there. And I do focus more on the creek and the beautiful area. I, I hardly ever look up that way. Will it be more um, towering and that above there? Certainly. But the, the good look, the good view is the other way. So I guess if you choose to look up at the buildings and miss the creek, you're doing yourself a disservice. But um, I don't think we're ruining the bike path. I think the bike path in its integrity is intact. The rock is intact. Um, it's still gonna be a delightful thing. And in fact, it's gonna be a, an attraction for people that, you know, live there. I, I think it's awesome that you could live there, jump on the bike path. You can send your kids across to the park. You ride a little farther down the bike path. You're at, at the lagoon. It, it's, it's a great location. Yes, it's dense. I feel like we're a little um, hamstrung just because of the prior agreement, but then I balance that off against because of the prior agreement, we get to have the bike path there. And if, if we hadn't let that go, you know, and how that all would litigate out, who knows? But it would be a mess. I can, I can tell you that. So for kinda all those reasons, I think it still makes sense to do it and I'm in favor of it. Um, but again, I acknowledge and have heard um, a lot of the comments and I think they've been good and I would encourage people to keep making them. And I think just like we've demonstrated over a number of years, and I think of things like the McDonald's up on Eighteenth and other things that came along and, and we painfully worked through a multitude of iterations and what if this and what if that, and in the end, it, it came out better. I think this is better than where we started. And I struggled last week when we were talking about the berms back and forth, a, a, a thirty-five foot setback, but no berm. Okay, well, and, and I had driven by there, but I didn't stop and get out and look. And now when you look, I said, if you put a, a flag up at the north end of that, you know, thirteen or fourteen feet before you're gonna get up to grade, why in the world would you put a berm there? It'd just be silly. Okay, but then farther down, we, we are gonna have a berm and it's gonna look nice. And I, I think you're right. Your, your units along, or your former units along the, the east side of Devil's Glen there just before fifty-third have a nice, you know, neighborhood kinda feel. So um, to the extent that ends up here, I'm, I'm liking it. I, I like the fact that we maintain a safety zone uh, coming down with the turn lane, which um, you were instrumental um, in, in requesting and no berm there, which makes sense. So for all those reasons, um, that's why I'm gonna be in favor of it. Um, not a hundred percent, but certainly significantly enough to, to say yes versus no. So that, and I think it's important to share that perspective with the people who have taken the time to come out here and, and voice their opinion and will be living with it um, as well. I drive down there uh, almost every day as well. So um, anyway, that's, that's where I'm at. And we're out of opinions and feedback from the commission, so now I'm to the point of a motion from someone.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number two-two dash zero-two-nine, subject to the staff recommendations.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case two-two dash zero-two-nine, subject to staff recommendations, which was deferred from July twenty, twenty twenty-two. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Okay, thank you. Case twenty-two dash zero-two-nine is recommended for approval and mark when will that go to the city council?
Uh, let's see where we at in the month now. Um, it is, it will be the next city council meeting, which will be the ninth? The ninth of August?
Sixteenth.
Sorry, I'm not used to having a second planning and zoning commission meeting, so.
Yeah, all right. All right, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.